All right, we'd like to welcome everyone to the December 17th, 2020 regular scheduled board meeting. Would you pray that your God and my Father will thank you for this day that you've made, but thank you for all the blessings you've put down upon each and every one of us. And we pray that you'll continue to bless our county. We pray that you'll touch all those that are affected by this COVID-19. We pray that you'll heal them. And we pray that you'll guide and direct us in life. Let us be good stewards over all that we're in charge of. And so that we may have our students to be successful in life. And we give you praise for all you do in Jesus' name. Everybody say it.
Amen. Ohio County Schools provide students with skills, knowledge, and support to achieve excellence and become lifelong learners.
All right, you have your agenda in front of you. Or is there anything you want to add or pull off to discuss that's on here? Want to contend? If not, any more?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second. Have a motion and a second. All in favor? Motion, carry. All right, let's present.
Up next, you know, it says recognitions, and I apologize. I didn't have Robin necessarily put anything there. But as you're well aware, this being our December meeting, if someone is rotating off the board, or whatever the case may be, it's the time that they would do so. This would be the last time that they would be with us. So we do have, now actually occurring times two tonight. We have two gentlemen that have been on the board for many years. Will Edens has been on the board for, I think, 10 years. Pretty close to that, give or take a month or two, but right at 10 years total. And then, of course, Mr. Dwight Raymond has been on the board for 12 years. And we certainly want to thank them for their service. We thank them for their dedication to Ohio County, and more importantly, to the students of Ohio County. And I certainly want to thank them personally for being a part of this board that gave me the opportunity a couple of years ago to take over when Mr. Lewis decided to step down. And I appreciate them tremendously for having that faith and that confidence. And I appreciate y'all so very much.
Do we have something that we would like to present to you this evening as a token of our appreciation?
Oh, wow.
These are locally made. A gentleman here in the county makes these. And then on the back, you'll see that it does have, says "Thank you for your service, Ohio County Schools." They'd like to present one of those to each of you. And again, we thank you very much. And I know y'all don't really want pictures. Would y'all post for a picture or no?
Go ahead, guys.
I don't mind. I can.
I just would like to get a picture and put something on Facebook later, if you gentlemen wouldn't mind. Just thanking y'all for your service and support.
You might get one of them.
Yeah, y'all want to hold your...
Just so we can see it in detail.
What do you expect? You want that?
Don't do nothing.
Appreciate it, guys.
Thank you.
That's all right.
Wearing a mask, you can't tell if you're smiling or not. I'll do the same thing. You're hearing from ear to ear, you can't see it.
But thank you all very much. Again, we appreciate everything you've done during your time on the board. You've been very supportive, and we appreciate that. I know I do, and I know our students and community appreciates your support. So thank you again. Appreciate it. All right. We have any requests to speak?
No.
All right, board members have anything?
I'd just like to say that I enjoyed working with all of y'all. And I think I went through some bad times on this board, and I went through some last few years, great times. And I really appreciate everything y'all have done with me and everything we've done with the school.
Appreciate you.
Yeah, appreciate you.
I enjoyed my time on the board too, especially this last six years. My first term was pretty rough. I think my second meeting, I wanted to close the elementary school in my district, so... I know when I applied for this position, to be appointed to it this last time, the guy was like, "You meant to put the school closed? You want to be back on the board?" I said, "Well, I did close, but..." I appreciate all of y'all.
I appreciate you two serving. I've learned a lot from Dwight. He's pretty knowledgeable in things. And Will, you've been a pleasure to serve with, and I appreciate you all. I appreciate both of you a whole lot.
I enjoyed it. I enjoyed every minute.
We've had a good board.
Yes, we have.
We've had a good board.
Now, we know Karen has so many questions she wants from Dwight.
That's exactly right.
Our trainings will be a little different.
That's true. It will be that.
Yeah, it will be very different for me. It seems like you all have been around most of my tenure here at Central Office, so we'll certainly miss you guys.
You won't have my pleasant smile up there.
Plus a few other things.
That's true.
The man go all the way. Yes, Ed, you might want to change your number before Dwight starts calling again.
No, I told Barry to give him your phone number.
I hear you, Dwight.
All right. You're ready. Yes, sir. I'd like to just share a few things and kind of catch you up to speed since we were together last month. Obviously, tomorrow is our last day for the first semester, so that will be after tomorrow. That will be 72 days of instruction down, and that will leave 91 for the second semester. If you watched the press conference on Monday, the governor spoke and talked about reopening of schools and gave some potential guidelines, and then talked about making some additional mandates or executive orders. That hasn't came down yet, but we think we know what those are going to be. You remember that chart that we looked at before that was green, yellow, orange, and red? They made some modifications to that chart. But in Tuesday, at the superintendent's webcast, they said that that chart will still be just a recommendation. So when you're in orange, they'll recommend a hybrid schedule or remote. And then when you're red, they will recommend a more extensive hybrid schedule or remote. When asking questions of the commissioner, what do they mean by "more extensive hybrid"? A lot of those questions was make sure that your classes, that your students are able to social distance. Now, for us, I don't think that's going to require much change because in the majority of all of our classes, we were able to do that. You know, when you have 10 kids or so in a classroom, you're already able to spread them out. But there were a few classes, pockets potentially at the high school. The rooms maybe were a little overcrowded on a given day, A or B. Maybe there was 15 to 16 in a room. But I've already met with the principal there, and we've talked about other rooms they can go to on those given days so that they'll have more space. So that will be our version of the extensive hybrid. We will just make sure that we're able to socially distance inside the classrooms, but we won't have to bust our groups apart anymore. We'll still be able to stay on A and B, and kids will still be able to go to school at least twice a week. The other thing he said that you have to do, and that we expect him to mandate, is if someone wants to go virtual at this time, you know, we have those virtual options through Odyssey Ware. But if, let's say if it's an advanced class, such as an AEP class, they've been attending in person this next semester, if they choose to be out of school for a period of time, then they will still be able to have that remote access in, just like we're doing now. They'll be able to watch from the computer but see our teacher teaching. That way, they can still be a part of an AEP class or an advanced class. So that'll be a modification that we'll be making as well. The Healthy at Schools document, we've been following that all along. That's where it talks about washing of hands, social distancing, mask wearing, things of that nature. That's what he's probably going to mandate and sign in as an executive order. And I think simply because some districts, as you know, there's at least one of our neighboring districts, I won't mention their names, but they were never on a hybrid schedule. They were going, when they went to school, they went five days a week full force. So by signing this executive order, whether it be tomorrow or next week when he does that, for those districts that were going full force, when they're in red, this is basically going to tell them they're not going to be able to do that now. Because how can you social distance if you have every enrolled kid in your building? It doesn't work. But again, for us, it won't be any major changes. It'll just be a few little minor tweaks here or there that we'll have to make. The next big question will be, when will that be? And if I had a crystal ball, or as Ginger Tichner says, if I had one of those magic eight balls, I could shake it up right now and give you my best guess, I think it'd be premature for me to tell you tonight what we're going to do. I hope that we can return to school January 4th. Now, I know the recommendation is out there that we wait till the 11th. And if you all tell me, whether it be tonight or individually later, that collectively we need to wait till the 11th, then obviously that's what we would do. Right now, what my plans are is, we have announced a long time ago when we first went to remote, that we hope to see you on January 4th. So I'm clinging on to that hope, and I'm still waiting for the 4th. And during Christmas break, if something happens and our numbers skyrocket again, and if we have to back up and punt, then we'll make that announcement. But as of right now, as long as our numbers are manageable and they're back to the area they are now, or less, then I don't see any reason why we couldn't go to school on the 4th. Talking with area superintendents today, a lot of people are up in the air. The ones that have already made a decision have already settled on going on the 11th. There's a couple that are considering the 4th, but like us, they're wanting to wait and see what happens in the next week or two before they try to announce any official plans. So that's kind of where we stand with that. Vaccines, you've probably heard a buzz about vaccines. I did send out an email yesterday afternoon to all of our staff, and I may have to eat crow if you all tell me to do something otherwise tonight. We were supposed to start working on rosters, so I sent that out to fulfill what the governor and the commissioner has asked us to do. And those rosters consist of their name, the school they're at, and they also had to put their age. And those are the rosters that we have to build, and they have to be submitted by December 30th. The topic where I said I may have to eat crow is, I went ahead and sent out, made an executive decision to not mandate the vaccine. Obviously, as a local Board of Education, you could choose to do that if you wanted to. But if you did mandate it, you have to give options to not meet that requirement, which would be disability or would also be a religious exemption. So since you have to provide exemptions anyhow, I just thought, why even try to say that it's mandated or required? Let the individual make the choice. So we sent that out yesterday, and I think a while ago when I looked, we already had around 122, 123 people respond yes. Because I said, if you don't want it, don't respond. Don't do anything. But if you do want it, please complete the Google survey, and it automatically comes to us in a spreadsheet. And the reason why we went ahead and sent it out, the state, the Department of Public Health wanted to find out, they have to know by the end of the month, how many they need to put in for Ohio County as far as educators, that group. The educators are going to be on a priority list, you know, other than some older elderly individuals that are like assistant living and they're frontline healthcare workers. Educators group will be kind of in that third tier, but it'll take priority over the general public. So they will order whatever the number is that we put in for on the 30th, and that's how many they'll order for Ohio County. So if you don't, if you're an educator and you don't sign up, then that means you will not be in the priority wave. You will have to wait till it's available to the general public. But if you are on this roster, you will have access to it earlier than it becomes available to the general public. So that's kind of where we stand with the vaccine.
Is that sent to all staff? Does that include all staff or just...?
Every person that works for Ohio County Schools.
That's generous, certified, certified.
Everybody. Not just teachers, that's bus drivers, monitors. Now, not everybody has email. Those that don't, the principals have been contacting them specifically. Daniel McCoy is very tech savvy. As you're aware, he created that Google form for us. And then he also created a QR code. You've seen those, the little... And so that's what we're using in transportation. We have that on the wall, and you just take your smartphone over there to it with the camera on, and it takes you to the survey, and you answer the four questions, and boom, you're done. Takes about 40 seconds. So we've been doing that with transportation the last day or two when they come in. If they're wanting to take it, we just take them to that picture, get their phone up. If for some reason they don't have a smartphone, we just go to the computer, and Mr. Stolfer does it for them, puts their name in and gets them added to the list. So that's what's been going on with the vaccine, and we do have to have that list submitted to the state by the 30th. Winter sports, just in case you're curious, they obviously started practicing on the 14th, and games can officially start on January 4th. It is restrictive. Right now, the guidelines that have been sent down to us from the High School Athletic Association is that each participant can have four tickets. So each player will get four tickets to basically give to whoever their fans are going to be, and that's the only tickets that'll be allowed. So there won't be anyone else unless you have a connection and get a ticket from one of those players, you won't be watching any ballgames at least the first half of January. If things improve, those guidelines might relax a little bit, and we can start having, you know, more like 10% or at the max, maybe 15% or so of capacity. But initially, four tickets. In my regional superintendent's meeting today, some, just to err on the side of caution, we're even going ahead and initially saying only two tickets. That for visiting teams, they were only going to let two people come in per player, and they were debating what to do even at home tickets. So just know that it's going to be very restrictive, and you might hear some backlash from maybe some that love to go watch ballgames. I know I have already.
I have too.
But I just said, listen, it is what it is. It's not about you and me watching the games. Well, and it's not about us watching the games. It's about the kids getting a chance to play.
Right.
And if the kids need to play without any spectators, then I'm okay with that. Let the kids play, and we can all watch on YouTube if that's what it takes.
Hey, Dwight, when you told the call, Karen did.
I did. I give it.
No, he lets the talk to me.
I'll give Karen a bet.
I will also say this, even with the vaccines, just in case somebody asks you, it doesn't mean you're now no way you're totally immune from getting COVID. You could still be a carrier of COVID. So they still recommend, health department still recommends following the same protocols we use now. Even whether you have vaccine or not, you still have to wear a mask. If you've been exposed, you still have to quarantine. You know, all of those same things will apply because they could be a carrier, even though they may not get very sick. So we will still follow all of those Healthy at School guidelines that we've been following since we first returned to action. Other than this being our December meeting, certainly wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, because after we adjourn this evening, I know we won't see you again probably until January. But that's all I have, Mr. Chairman. All right, you've had time to look over your consent. Need a motion and a second to approve the consent?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
All right, we've got a motion and a second. All in favor? Carry. All right, you've had time to look over your personal report. Lot smaller than that, so that's more.
Yeah, it should be.
All right. Approved the CRI audit report. All right, this CRI is our new auditing firm, and they have done just that. They have done their job and task, and we have with us tonight Mr. Lenny White. And Lenny will be reviewing that audit with you all.
Good evening, Chairman, and board members, and just to have it, I'll be off the beat. And it's a pretty big report. Again, I'm not sure what you've been used to in the prior years. I spent a little more time this year, I know, with the management group and went through, and they seem to think it's kind of something they haven't had to test. So tonight, I thought I could just do a little bit. I mean, maybe longer than normal, but not forever, because it is a big report. But kind of give you some highlights and just some things that we try to give insight to as we go through the audit process. And that way, I'm kind of using your report and the graphs kind of off and off. But first, we'll start in the report itself. And if you can turn to page, actually, page one, we'll start from. And this is the actual report. This is what we provide to the district. We come in and give an opinion on the financial statements, and always further stated or not further stated. And they were a chance, given the opinion, we'll see, but still on the second page, that they were further stated. The letter breaks out what responsibilities are yours, what's open for district goals, and what is our responsibility. Page two carries on over and see the word opinion, and that's where we give the kind of called clean opinion, an unmodified report. So any user of these financial statements, you know, lets them know that they're further stated, and then they rely upon these with no exceptions. And then the school district has a governmental entity, so therefore has to do reporting on government auditing standards, which is a little more comprehensive than normal auditing standards. And other information also is required to be put in here, and we'll see the required information, primarily the MVNA, just called Management Discussion Analysis. You'll see it here after this. That's something that Kathy does, and it's something that is really good. It came in like 10, 20 years ago. Time flies. But it's a piece of information that we can't as auditors say about a company or a government, but it gives a reader an understanding of your operations and kind of thinks of what happened. So it gives an insight kind of where you're being, where you are, and where you're going. So it's a good, it's a good read. I think you all go to read it. Very informative from that standpoint. But we don't give an audit opinion. We look at it and make sure Kathy and Super Southern didn't get too creative and go too far from what the audit says. So, you know, we do make sure we give assurance to it, but we don't really audit the numbers. So that is the report. So a good report for the financial statements goes. Page four is the MVNA that I just described. And it runs all the way over to really to page 16. I won't go through it, but that's what that part is. Page 17 is the first section you'll see in the financials. And these financials are really broken out. They have two sets of financials in it. The first set is called the government's why. And what the government's why, the purpose of that is, mostly if you have a business or something, have a company, you'll use it for the bank or whatever. It shows you like your balance sheet, your income statement. This tries to show everything for school on one full accrual method. The other stuff we'll see in the back, what's called fund accounting or fund statements, is what Kathy does every day. You know, it's about pots of money or different groups. But it's so disaggregated, you don't know in total what the district really looks like. And this came about in part of the new standard, came out in 2016, about 10 years ago. There were some governments that failed on bond issues due to causes, money with a slice and dice to make places, you couldn't tell the true picture of an entity. Let's pull them in together, kind of show you the health of your entity, and really on a full accrual basis, on a full gap basis, and kind of tell you where you are. So from around here, I'm going to show you your assets, as far as your cash, your current assets, your campus at cost, what you have in it. Then we'll go through and show you your debts, and also you can read in your net equity. So the first part, we're going to see your assets. You see two columns. One says the government activities, and one says the business type activities. Primarily, school food is going to be the main thing, the business activity, that's the primary activity in there. And the government activities are going to be everything else, my standpoint. So kind of, you know, now you see the two columns. So we slide out through your assets, and see coming out to the total, the total assets, you were $57.6 million in the current year, and you're about $57.9 last year, so about $2,000 change, not a lot of change in debt. Now, there wasn't a bigger change in your composition. Your current assets, which are your investments, your cash, things that you spend, did increase about $2 million. But capital assets, like your campus and things like that, did drop about $2.8 million. And the reason it dropped, because primarily, it also charged depreciation in here too. Like you use the word depreciation. $2 million was charged on that to write it down. So it's a non-cash, but it writes it down. So that's kind of the change on the asset side. As far as the liabilities go, you'll see things called deferred inflows and outflows. These things are tolerated to pension for the state and also for health insurance. It's called other coastal benefit, OPAP, this is slide four. And these are all given by the actuary. Liberties, you can see here, this is liabilities. Again, above the district, total liability is $40.6 million versus $42.9 million in the prior year. About $1.00 drop in liabilities in the prior year to current year. But most of that comes from a payment of debt. That was paid down about 1.3 million. And then the, it's kind of funny, the pension and the OPAP liability, they kind of offset. One went up 1.6 and one went down 1.5. So the kind of net overall offset, but they did go up some on one, one down on the other. So that kind of tells the net changes on here. And also, this shows like a conflict amnesties, which is your sick leave. It's an estimate there of what you pay out for sick leave for all of your employees that are five years and greater of employment. And also, it shows again, any kind of accrued interest, and also, also put the pension items. We'll see the pension items and the OPAP items are the big things that are in question of how it's called a negative impact on most governmental entities, and districts not excluded from that. So if we go to page 18, one over, there's the inflows, also put pensions. Now, the net positions, that's your equity. That's your assets minus liabilities. You can see on the net position for the government funds, you had $17.5 million. And likewise, your total is about 17 still current across. And your actual increase was about $1,505,000 in the current year. So you had a good increase still with that. What you want to watch, but this is what this one does here, anytime you go see a negative situation in that equity, that's where the problem hits. So this is just kind of the test you look at to see, am my OPAP not okay? I'm kind of scoring your financials. And so you're still, you're showing a deficit down there of $9.6 million. Well, that kind of looks bad too, because you're negative for your operating activity. Well, what's causing that is the pension and the OPAP piece. So a lot of times, what I'll suggest, if you add, that's something that's given to you from a sense from an actuary, you're not going to pay that back right now. If you did, every government in the Commonwealth would look wrong.
Yeah.
Because there's not enough money. So in reality, if you were to add that back, really, then how do you look? And you really go into a surplus of about 15.7, that number. So really, you know, you're okay once you kind of back down, kind of see. So it kind of distorts a little bit that number, but it's required by accounting rules to put it in here, but it kind of gives you a true picture of kind of really how you're staying there. Because if we had the pension back and you were negative still, I would have some discussion with you. Because if there's something else going on, you might want to just look at, because you're still carrying an overall deficit for operations, but you're not going to have that back. So still a good report then. Please feel free to go through stuff, ask questions. If you had some, I'd be glad to help you go through them. The next segment is page 19, this is on the operating segment. Again, on current year, to the far left is expenses it takes to run into the district in different areas. Now, on the going across the board to the right, it shows you the money, like grant money, the things that are specific to earmarked for those costs, and how it offsets that cost. And of course, that doesn't cover all the cost, it covers part of it. And then your tax money things will end up covering the rest of it. We'll see it on the next page. So you see here, total revenues for the year about 47.8, I mean, 48.6 this year, 47.3 last year, about 1.3 million increase in revenues. And last year, you had expenses about 45.6, this year about 47.6, about $2 million increase in expenses, but a net of $7,000, my standpoint, as a decline from prior year. So we'll go on with the next page, page 20, and I see the totals here. You'll see the net change position. That was that number I told you earlier, about the increase, $949,000. $949,000, the net change at the bottom there, and 130 on business type. So you still have a positive change of revenues by expenses on the overall accrual method. So again, we do a total right now of nine districts across the state. And so, you know, a lot of them do not show positive, I'll tell you right now, my standpoint. So this district, you'll see them more like how much the comments on the general fund is very healthy in that area. So you've got a good report, my standpoint, and it's a good financial number coming through. Even though it did drop about $900,000 prior year, it's still a good number, having a positive of about $1 billion. Any questions on that? Okay, so we're going to jump in over on page 21. These are things you're used to seeing more often. This segment is only done once a year prior, and pretty much in the office, that's all you ever see it. This segment starting now is called fund segments, and you see it's about funds. And you'll see the general fund, special revenue fund, which is kind of called for the grants, they're called fund two. And those are the two major programs for this year of the district, and all the others kind of lumped into one total there and the other. As far as the asset goes for the general fund, we have 15.3 for the current year. Last year, it was about 13.6. year, last year about thirteen point eight, about one point four million increase in total assets with general fund, with one point three of that being in cash. So very strong increase in your liquid asset, having cash increase that much. Uh, special revenue funds, pretty comparable, three ninety-five this year, two fifty-two last year, K. And then on the total other, it was six thirty-eight this year, K, versus a million twenty last year. You'll see the other funds dropped down some this year because the construction fund, you have some money accruals up from last year from bond proceeds that were spent out this year in two thousand twenty. So we kind of dropped out when you spend money's out. So overall, a very good increase on that asset side. On the next page, we'll see, page twenty-two, the liabilities and the equity from the fund You can see on the liabilities, not a huge change, it was a two thirty-seven, or two thirty, two seventy-three this year, I'm sorry, and five thirty-one last year, K, about two hundred thousand dollars change. Now, again, a big number on the liabilities number. Uh, the fund balances though, were very possible again this year. Uh, you'll see down there, so the fund balance for the general fund, fifteen million, eighteen thousand and two hundred eighty-eight, ninety-eight dollars. Last year, about thirteen three, a million. So you got about a million seven increase in the current year in your, in your general fund. So you can see the, the types of the balances, the fund balances, the non-expensible primarily for inventory, where you can't spend it, it's in, it's in the asset inventory, restricted primarily to tax seven. And the committed really is coming through from construction, sick leave, which y'all done as a board, to committed, since on the financials. Assigned money are really money that's been kind of earmarked and obligated for open P Os, uh, site, uh, base carryovers, uh, D A F funds in the future. The non-assigned, every money is just clear for the district to use on any kind of obligated obligations. So again, a good number from my standpoint. Uh, most of the other funds, again, the social revenue fund are comparable, one hundred sixty-two this year, one forty-one last year, K. And likewise, we had a small, they did have a drop in the other amount of construction fund just turned out, last year of nine hundred thousand dollars, this year six hundred thousand dollars. So that's pretty much the change in the equity. Page twenty-three, this is just a sheet that shows the reconciliation, like we had the first segments, the government why to the funds, it just kind of does the equity to and from, it kind of shows you where you had fixed assets back in, you had debt back in, it just kind of does the reconciliation, how you get from one equity to the other equity. Page twenty-four, this is the revenue split segments. You can see on the general fund, total revenues, thirty-six million, one hundred fifty-nine thousand, three sixty-three in the current year. Last year was thirty-six million, four seventy-one. So really about three hundred and twelve thousand dollar drop in revenue from, from the prior year to current year. Uh, special revenue funds, really, I like about, only about a thousand dollars difference from the two years, so not much change there. Government funds, about a two hundred thousand dollar draw also from there. Expense wise, uh, some of the larger changes on the general fund, probably came through the city grantation. Last year was about three point eight, this year three point three, so about four hundred and fifty, about less bucks, I think, for purchase in the current year than the prior year. And if you're going over on page twenty-five, carries expenses to show all the net changes. Uh, you receive whole of expenses, thirty-four million, five point five almost rounded up to thirty-four point five last year. Only about forty-two thousand dollars net change expenses, so really almost break even for any kind of difference in the two years. Now, this is the key number here, which I might, I want always to focus on because it's really shows how the general fund is supportive if your salaries are too much out of line or other costs out of line versus your revenues, which can harm you physically. But you all are not in that position for sure, it shows here, but the excess deficiency of revenues or expenditures. You're showing in the current year about a one million, seven, one point seven million dollar increase on that number. Last year is one point nine, about two hundred thousand dollars difference. But that's a very healthy change of positive where you had revenues in excess, expenses doubled about one point seven million approximately. I mean, that's, that's very strong, I don't see that very often from my standpoint. Now, I know you all have things planned, well, with their minimum, let's do some of these money on down the road, but we'll touch on another kind of summary here in the amount of kind of this report, but I want to touch with you, but that's again, a very strong number. Other financing sources, net thirty-two thousand dollars. Last year, you had, you paid more out, you paid about a million two out for some million projects, they showed you didn't have to pay that out. So that was able to go back down to the fund balance. So this year, your net change, one million seven, the net change versus one point three last year, about three hundred thousand dollars, a four hundred thousand dollars change, improved this year from prior year. Now, something I would like to go through and explain is kind of, you know, districts, you always want to kind of carry anywhere from one month to at least three months of operating expenses. So that can kind of tell you, either you're spending too much, too less, plus it's going to make you think twice about what you're carrying money in, but you might need a plan for it and put it in the commitment side, what you've done. And so like right now, look at your fund balance and then the district, you're going to spend about thirty-four point five million this year and you back out all the half payments, these numbers also include things that are paid by the state on your behalf, which is about nine point five million. But truly, your expenses were, were about, uh, twenty-five thousand dollars, I mean, twenty-five million dollars versus thirty-four million dollars. So when you divide the twenty-five million into twelve months, it's about two million seventy-seven thousand a month of what you spend on average, the cost of district to run their operations. So when you divide that into your fund balance, if you have excess of, or your unassigned balance, it's about six months coverage. And then for the unassigned, plus the committed, because the committed, you could, you had to come back in and unwind that to use for operation, because it's what I needed, gives you about seven months coverage total. But most time, you know, when you think over three months, you're seeing, you know, you're probably getting some excess. So, you know, I was talking to someone earlier with the management group is, you know, I knew you were going through building stuff, you might want to somehow go in and commit some more funds for construction or something if you're doing it. So your money is going to be used, my understanding, so put it in there and you might play out this year as to how it comes out by the end of the year, what would you spend out by the end of this year. But if you show that excess and you kick out this stuff there too, you may want to come through and try to commit some more for construction. It gets you back really what you plan on using, because it looks like you've got more in there than you need, but really you don't, maybe because you all have plans to use those funds. So it tries to give a better reputation when you get these things going framework and it starts seeing your numbers and starts saying, well, you know, you're, you're hoarding money, or you're, but you're not, you've just got money, you haven't put it in here in different pods to show what you're using it for. And as you go through the tax increase or new something, it helps support this reason of why things are being used versus having excess funds, because you're a very sound district, you're doing very healthy, my standpoint. Any questions on that?
It's just nice to hear, thank you.
Well, that, that, but that's where it tries to be transparent, but you're, you're actually, you're accounting and you're remembering, you're, uh, taxpayer to think to ask questions, so it helps to be a support, not a transparency. Now, if you look at these graphs, they kind of give a little quick summary of the things that it says. And normally we do a five-year presentation, of course, we have been at long, and some things are pretty different from a different auditor, so it's kind of comparable, so I deal with that for the two years. This first year shows the general fund fund balance, you see you had a good year, you increased again by one point, one point seven million, so good, good trend. Many positive share step-ins will be good, so pitchers always help me a little bit understand things. Now, you can see your breakdown of your revenues was really consistent. Your money from the general fund, from the local side and state fund and federal, pretty much spot on. So it's not really a swing of who carries you and what load, it's pretty, distribution of it's pretty equal between the both of yous. The next graph kind of shows where the money was spent on the general fund. Actually, which is good, you actually spent two percent more this year on, on instruction, which is what you're here for, for, for the children of the district. So actually, more money went to instruction in the prior year, administration dropped about a percent, plats pretty even, and student transportation simply dropped some. So some of those activities needed in the prior year did not carry over into two thousand twenty. So kind of gives you a little history there on the expenses comparability. Then on the net change, you can see here again, one point seven this year versus one point three last year, a good increase in the positive share step. Then on the last graph, as we've been through, it shows you the actual fund balances and the uses of those. The district was pretty much comparable, net in total, commitment was two, assigned, actually went up a little bit more from my standpoint, and the non-spendable inventory was not really too much difference, and had a positive increase in the unassigned, which can be used going forward. So a good report from my standpoint. Any questions on the general fund, if we move on? All this is business type activities, we're still a little bit. We go to page six, twenty-seven, this is on the school food primarily, there's just one other non-military hours in the total. Uh, school food is here on the assets this year, it actually went up from two point three to one point nine last year, about four thousand dollar increase, most of that's going to be in cash. Uh, liabilities primarily went up because of the pension number, about three hundred thousand dollars increase in the pension. The net position and equity, one hundred forty-seven thousand, or one hundred forty thousand rounded up versus nine seven last year, about fifty thousand dollar increase, it was a good, good increase. If we go over to the next page, this is operating segment. You see the operating revenues, one hundred fifteen thousand this year versus one hundred eighty last year. Of course, COVID hit around March, whatever, school got out, so lunchroom sales were gone, my standpoint, so you don't have a full whole year versus nine months before you missed that bar. So likewise, you see the operating expenses, uh, actually had, had a good trend this year. You, uh, had about three million one since operating expenses, last year you had about three million four. Operating expenses dropped about three hundred thousand dollars in the current year, and that was primarily in wages and salaries. So again, a good draw. Revenue was pretty flat on that part, but expenses really did drop in the current year. So it helps us see the operating loss, it shows there two million nine eighty versus three million four eleven last year. Now, as we know, most of the money is coming through federal reimbursement on program, so it's subsidized, so you can see three million two in there for the total off, non-operating revenues. And pretty much same three million two last year, about twenty-four thousand dollars change total overall on the non-operating numbers. But the key difference is it says the net position. We'll also point out the transfers is still good because the food services still cover money for their admin costs, indirect costs, come back over to the general fund. So you're able to still carry money over to support the general fund for the costs incurred for the school food program. So the net position in the current year showed a net change positive of ninety-seven thousand dollars. Last year, it showed a loss of one fifty-seven. So about two hundred and fifty thousand dollar swing in the positive direction in the current year for school food. So again, a good move, uh, operation for the school food for the year. Now, lunch activity for two thousand twenty, had about fifty-five hundred and seven thousand meals for lunch versus, uh, five thirty-nine the prior year, about thirty percent, thirty-two thousand, uh, drop in meals for the lunch, breakfast, three hundred ninety-eight, K, versus four, or three than prior year, about thirty-five thousand, thirty-five thousand meals dropped from breakfast. This year, you all weren't quite, some, some districts this year have been really, really aggressive in the school food. You all worked quite aggressive from that standpoint. Came out good financially, you know, and your school food is very healthy, but some districts this year really got really aggressive in that and made school food really did spike a lot. Because you got, the reimbursement changed a lot to summer feeding, because a lot got changed now with how they were being done, which the school no longer ran session. And a lot of people packed meals in buses and gave kids five meals, five breakfasts everywhere, and it went to a lot of people. And the numbers really did skyrocket across a lot of schools, we saw. You're all, I think it started that way, but then it kind of leveled off, my standpoint. So still made money, uh, from my standpoint. So you'll see for, for the current year, you ended up having a fund balance of about, uh, well, can't really use some fund balance in here because of the pension. If you go back to your current assets, you go, you had cash and then you have a sense of your total expenses. Total expenses were about two point five million, you do over twelve months, it's about two hundred thousand dollars a month. Right now, you've got about ten months coverage of operating expenses, which most time K D E will come through, anything over three months, there will make you start spending money. So again, you're very healthy in that area and you probably got stuff from K D E, I think some folks can see this, that it turns some money down to get some things in there. So again, very good problem to have, uh, from my standpoint, but, uh, very, very well Any questions on that? If not, then on page thirty-one is the judiciary fund, so it really gets into the school activity fund and the trust. And you can see on the page thirty-one, the activity fund had about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars in assets in the current year, about one point two last year. The trust had about four point eight million this year and about four point seven in the prior years, no lot of change. And forward to page thirty-two, the operations, income was comparable, three hundred forty-five thousand this year, three forty-eight last year, and the net change was one thirty-nine this year and one hundred and last year. So really just almost spot on for the two years, as it is this year. That's the basic segments. Now, page thirty-three through page eighty-one are all the notes. We will not go through the notes, but the notes, what they are, the notes go through, give you a lot of detail of what these front segments were, these numbers were. Now, unfortunately, about thirty of these notes are done with pension and O P A. And if you have any kind of solvency issues, I apologize, I'm going to check them out. And that one from reverse factor, but my standpoint. Uh, page eighty-two is the budget. Again, the budget that's here, uh, positive trends on the budget, you were over, you get on revenues, of course, expenses were sense likewise, uh, short of overall total, so again, positive variance there too. So kind of go back to the general fund, you ended up again with the one point seven million dollar surplus, so again, the budget actually was good. Uh, we're going over to page eighty-six. When you go to the pension, this, this is probably the save you time for reading the note. These two graphs here is table, probably the best information you can see. This gives you a kind of an idea of where the pension numbers are. You know, you're in two planes, you're reading what's called K T R S for teachers and the service for classified folks. And this one is for the teachers, of course, the teachers, the state is in pays it for your, your behalf. So if you have no liability, commonwealth Kentucky has a liability, but it shows that here, it was not in the top zero percentage of yours, but you can see the total going across here and it's really, this shows you how you can really play with the numbers. And it's a real example here. You can see in two thousand fifteen, your, your portion of the liability was a hundred and three million, almost a hundred and four million dollars. And if you slide over to two thousand twenty, it's about sixty-six million. So, you know, a huge drop. And what happened is, in the, in the prior year, they dropped a discount rate, what's called a vitality value on, on the money. It was at a four point five in prior years and bumped it up to seven and three and a half in the other years. So a three, three percent swing in that discount rate changed all that number. So that's how you can really play with the numbers from a national standpoint to show how that liability can change. So when you see it, what's happening is it caused the discount rate change. And you can see all the asset X of your, uh, total for your payroll. I will point out, I mean, it was kind of, it was kind of odd, that's how it was until fifteen, you see the eleven billion five or sixteen. The part presentations, if you were getting, didn't have the actual numbers in there correctly. Kathy and I said we tried to run some numbers to fix that number, and the best number, she wasn't here, we weren't here, so the best thing we can come up with, put it in there from that standpoint. Because what happens is, the actuaries are always a year behind, and this number is really for nineteen, and you've got to have an eighteen number. And so you got here, it's really fifteen or twenty-fourteen. So we didn't have, the, the number wasn't in the prior audits, so we had to go out there and try to find that number.[1668.04] So we had to go out there and try to find that number. But you see after that, most of the changes in payroll are pretty consistent. So that's kind of the impact on the KTRAs. On page eighty-eight, it is the SIRs. And you do pay the SIR. You can see the percentages at the top. That's your percentage of the liability when it breaks it out. You can see how it's changed though, primarily of this increased funding, I mean, lack of funding from seven point five million to fifteen. So it's up. And there really hasn't been a lot of change, some changes in discount rate, a lot is just because of liability issues. You can see your payroll too from my standpoint. Now, you can see also, the big change here at the very bottom. In fifteen, your rate for pension was twelve and three quarters, where in twenty, it was nineteen point three. So again, that's a number that, as you know, could escalate and probably not go down if it goes up here. That is the pension, and then to get over to page ninety-one. That starts apart with the KTRAs piece. Again, on the health insurance, on the OPE now. You can see that pension had a tier before it started, before the OPE. OPE's only about three years. You can see the numbers there, it's pretty comparable coming through. This is on the teachers again, which you do have a small piece of the liability. And on page ninety-two, go through also for the teachers, which you have health insurance for the life piece. Page ninety-three is the classified. You do have all there. And you can see there, this is one's really been pretty, pretty consistent. You can see it's four point four, four point five, and nine eighty, thirteen, and three point six. It's actually performed better, and it's improved. You can see by that, you can tell by the rates, you were four point seven or it was four point seven six. So again, not a lot of change over three years for the actual health insurance. Page ninety-five. This is also, this starts to show like in the front, we saw the other column, what we called it. This breaks that down, shows what funds make up the front totals. So you tell about fund, what we go through there from my standpoint. And the same thing for the actual business, which has some of the school age care, the fourth and program, and the high school all total. On page one hundred and one shows your school activity funds by school. And by state law, required to show a detail for the high school. And on page one oh two, it starts the detail for the high school, two by five. Page one oh four is called the schedule of federal reports. It's actually the federal money for the whole year. And on page one oh five, you see you have five million, six hundred point seven thousand dollars. Last year was five million, six hundred twenty dollars, that's one point two thousand dollars. So about seven point eight percent. So pretty comparable in two years. Now, that should change, I think, coming up for this next year with the tariff and stuff. Next year, go bust out for twenty million. Then on page one oh eight, this is the second letter in here. This is what's called the holiday standards. It's on controls and on compliance, laws and regulations. For controls, Joe, you have what's called a terror witness and significant deficiencies. And the terror weakness is, the weakness is so weak that it would not catch them, the terror sector could go through. These financials could go out, the terror mistake it, and nothing would catch it. And the other would be certain deficiencies where it's heightened enough, it's not that level, but it's enough we think it should come to your attention. We did not have any of those reports this year from a control standpoint. So again, that's a positive report from my standpoint. Likewise, for laws and regulations that are directly tied to final management statements, for no compliance issues noted in our procedure. So again, two good reports there for compliance and for controls. Second letter for page one ten is on federal programs. Same thing for controls and also compliance, and we actually give an opinion. A opinion on one major program, what was titled one. And again, to receive a slightly modified opinion, it was claimed on title one twelve. No control issues for the control or no compliance issues. So again, two good reports there. And on page one thirteen, this kind of gives you a summary. But I mentioned here of the findings, none of them reported, and two kind of reports for financials and the federal programs. And one fourteen carries over to the title one, and being unreported. Page one fifteen, that's one that's called a management letter. These are things that will have protection balances, not heightened as much as control risk as in the first two that I mentioned too. And we did have, we did have some comments here, and normally a lot of things driven schools, it comes from what's called the red book. All the procedures done at a school level for activity funds. And we did have some comments in here on those areas. And so gone through, identified by school, what they were, nothing, I mean, are alarming, but there's some things in there that need to be taken care of. You know, some things will cancel, you know, chessboard canceled, signatures, some things were unnoted. So deposits, there's things that didn't need to take care of, but wasn't like no fraud and that nature found, but just some things needed to be addressed. And there noted for as a response goes, on page one eighteen starts the response by management, how they plan to address those problems, if it would please, if they have to talk And that kind of sums up to all it. Now, this last part, you see it on page one twenty-one, it's called the floor operations. This, this topic is really just a part to give into anybody who's been involved in the audit process. Y'all have like an audit committee for the board, has that capacity. So I don't go through this kind of, it's kind of a bullet point, but it's just kind of a part of all the way here. On page one twenty-three, and I'll go through this pretty quickly. Again, we were independent coming through the process of the audit. Page one twenty-four, didn't have any change, any kind of accounting problems this year or for the district. Page one twenty-five, we did not have any disagreements with the management for all the goals. We were very professional, cordial, we gave us information. Page one twenty-six, we didn't have to consult any outside, any other accountants or professionals. Management did send a representation letter, they reviewed these financials, and they take responsibility for them, and they agree their effort to their best ability. Did not note any material fraud from our actual audit processes. Now, page one twenty-eight, the biggest numbers in here, what are estimated, is your complete assets, your sick rate, and then the pension and the OPE liability, we're talking about actual work studies. Likewise, the investments are also estimated at fair values for next year. We also have like an independent, actually the value of your portfolio, and it was looked at in the range which we could pass on, and showing the values were accurate. Page one thirty, to show that there were adjustments, we only had one adjustment really. And it's something that definitely applies in the prior year, the loan from the water district here was fixed. So what this has to say for you all, which I like to always, I guess people work hard in the district too, it gives them a compliment, is with as long as one adjustment, that means every month you get information, you make decisions, it's accurate. So that's the key thing is, if you make decisions on good numbers, so you know what to, what to impact take. So again, it's a good reflection upon the management of the district. Some of the gentleman was passed on, page one thirty-one, we were dealing with that material, and those, again, nothing significant, we passed on, and start testing. And then the last letter there is just the letter for management, that you can sign. It does have to be the management's. That might be a little more than you should say, and I thought it was too boring. Always remember those exciting topics. Any questions?
Thank you very much for this.
Thank you.
Pretty informative, more informative than what I've seen before.
Very much so.
Again, if y'all have questions, also free to ask from my standpoint. Most times, questions will get more and more, and that's schools for regular questions sometimes, questions that pop up. So everything, you guys got a very good team here, so very qualified, so sure.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
All right, would you have a motion to approve the audit?
Yes, sir. I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion in a second. All in favor? Here. It's Kate, here.
Good job, Catherine.
All right, Chris, this is the report for the month of November. We started the month with a beginning general ledger balance of fifteen million, six seventy-two three fifty-seven ninety-five. Total revenues, six million, five hundred and sixty-seven thousand, six thirty-four nineteen. Expenditures, two million, nine hundred and nineteen thousand, five thirty-six ninety-two. Brings us to an end of month general ledger balance of nineteen million, three twenty-four fifty-five twenty-two. Our Baird investment had a market value of just under two point three million and a payout value that was approximately two point two million. The beginning bank balance was sixteen million, four thousand, four sixty-two ninety-four. Our deposits and other credits, six million, fifty-seven thousand, two ninety-six forty-eight. The checks and other debits, two million, two seventy-two, two sixty-three sixty-one, less our outstanding checks, brings us to a reconciled balance there again of nineteen million, three twenty-four fifty-five twenty-two. And that's up about two point seven million from the prior year at this point. And I will say that at this point in the year, of course, this has been an unusual year, in more ways than one. But as we, you know, kind of approach the midpoint and the fiscal year, as I look back, you know, there are obviously less expenses just in general each month that I've looked at, and that kind of has accumulated as we've gone through the year. So we're tracking this year better in revenue sake, about, just about ninety, ninety-four thousand dollars just year over year, just looking at where we were at this point last year. Our payroll expenses were actually about five hundred and seventy-five thousand less. And you know, there's certain segments while we've continued to work our regular schedules and everything, there are some pockets of payroll that we have not had to incur. So that, again, kind of snowballs as we go through this fiscal year. And you know, at least until things change materially from just our activity level, then I would expect that to continue. So that bodes well for us financially, but you know, I'd much rather have incurred the expense and have us back to normal, but, but those things will work to our advantage from a financial perspective. And then our expenses that are non-payroll related were running about fifty thousand less than we were last year. So there again, a good, a good change looking at that. So on a cumulative basis, when we look at a net impact, we're about seven hundred thousand better than we were last year. So, was there any questions about the report there?
Nope.
One thing if I might mention, we did have a bond sale on the night, and our results were very good. I'm not sure if Seth had passed along any detailed information about that, but I'll just mention the, the rate that we received was one point three nine, which is, I know you all met Kelly when she was here the last board meeting, and with Baird, and she had indicated to me that that was the best, the lowest rate for a K-12 sale that she has seen, a twenty-year bond sale. So even late in the summer, she said she had, they were about one point nine percent. And I think Warren and Bolling Green had had bond sales recently, and theirs were about two or maybe even over two, I believe she said. So, and I think they even have a bond rating that's better than the state's. So even with that, they still fell in the market in a pocket that was more expensive than what we did. So there again, as Kelly had indicated, I think at this meeting when we did, having that special meeting, and we just really hit a sweet spot in the year. So we had some very cheap money that we have now to utilize to, to use toward these two projects. So hopefully that will bode well with the plans that we have for the other project at ATC. So we wanted to pass along that really good news. So it makes our dollars go farther, and so we're very well pleased to hear how that turned out.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. Have the other board member, need a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor? All right, approved board member.
We discussed this last month, I think in my comments, I went through that process, but I have since discovered that we have to actually have an official action idol declaring, declaring that we have a vacant board member position before we can start the advertisement process. And as you recall, once you approve this tonight, we will then be able to have this form letter that I already have filled out, I have to send it to four different entities, and then starting next week, we can run the ad in the paper for two weeks. And then, starting sometime after the very first of the year, you can start looking at any of the applications that have been turned in, and in theory, potentially have someone in that foursome seat, possibly even here at the January meeting, if you choose to move that quick. But we will, once you approve this tonight, we will notify everyone tomorrow. I'll send these letters out, and then next week in the paper, we will start the ad, and we'll go from there.
And we'll decide on, we all want to look at applications, or how we want to, how we want to do that?
Yes, the ad will tell them to come in and pick up an application, or we'll also make it available online. And once we get the applications, I will email those to you all to review. And then at some point in time, the four board members in January will need to look and review those, whether it's a special called meeting or whatever you choose, to make a decision. You can even interview any applicants that there are.
I'll ask that.
It's up to you all. You can do it by just looking at the applications, but you can also do an interview process. Who knows, you may have four people apply, you may have one. I mean, who knows, we'll just have to advertise and see what happens. And once we get those applicants, I will email you their applications, and we'll go from there.
Okay, sounds good.
All right.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
All in favor? All right, approved CD phase BG three.
All right, seems like Groundhog's Day on some of these things, but it's just the hoops you have to jump through in submitting everything. We've looked at a BG before, but this is the construction documents, and I'll just turn it over to either one of the gentlemen from RVS if they need to walk us through item four, and then also when we get to item five.
The BG three, it's a, to repeat, at design development, we do a BG two and a BG three approval. It's obviously, it's a KDE form, and it's a step that they have the board to approve at each phase during the design process. Now, the notice of top versus project phase, you have the design development box checked, you have the construction document box. So I believe last month when we got design development, we had the design development box checked. And it's, you know, what happens, there's no difference from the one we had at design development, which is good, but sometimes as plans evolve and engineers are doing their design work, or you know, as architects, things evolve, scope may change, or increases may be found in the design that wasn't accounted for in previous BG forms that was completed. This gives you the opportunity to adjust those numbers before bid day. And then once the bids are taken, we'll have another BG one that's going to be revised to reflect the actual cost of construction. Because up to this point, it's all just estimated. So it's a form that's got to be submitted with our construction documents to KDE. Like I sort of said, it's just a, it's another cookie jumper. But I don't think there was any changes from the last one to this one, so.
There wasn't, same, same figures. So like you said, we've already done the design development, now this is just another phase in this process, now the construction documents. It'd be my recommendation that you approve this BG three.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second. All right, all in favor? All right, now it says through the construction documents again.
So the construction documents, you know, last month was the design development. When we get the design development drawings, that's the first time that we actually have our systems designed from our engineers. First was schematics, and that's just site plan and floor plan, then design development, that's when we get our engineers involved, they start designing, being in the site civil, structural design, and architectural plumbing. So that was in the design development. The construction document phase is where we have these plans ready to go to the contractors. But before we do that, we have to get it all through, through Frank, through KDE. But it's the final, it's the final phase that the board has to approve drawings before we can pick up bids. And it's just a more elaborate set of drawings, specifications are done at that point. The, you were the drawing set, it's much thicker each step, because it's just more work than done. Jeremiah's put a lot of work into this project, and has it ready to submit to KDE, which is a big step, and now it's, now we're on their clock to get everything renewed.
I'll make the motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion.
I'll second.
We have a second. All in favor? Hey, I have a little question for you. One of those. Will they do this here in the summer where there is no school, on the change in all the, what they say, they've got to change all the electrical coming in, and the plumbing, and the gas?
Well, we would, we'll do the, we'll do the routing, you know, while school's in session. And then we'll have to tie in probably during summer.
Yeah, we, the plan now is, so our main utility is running that front line. And what we have is, phase one of the project will be to construct a new mechanical room just off the corner of the machine tool. room just off the corner of the machine tool shop. And this, it will kind of be a standalone building, um, where we're going to house our heat pumps and connections, and fire pumps, and sprinklers, and things. We're going to intercept all those utilities into this new building, and we'll look to have that completed, um, early to midsummer. That way, then, by school coming back, we can have things up on the new system, because as soon as kids are out of the building, then they can come in and kind of rip everything down, and put things back in, and we'll have things switched over, and then, at some point in the summer, then we'll begin constructing the new addition, um, out of the front there, the new classrooms, the new admin. And meanwhile, we'll, in phases, and as weather permits, and as scheduling permits, we'll be re-roofing the entire portion of, of work, and we'll kind of draw our way up towards the addition, and about the time we're ready to put that roof on, then we'll connect the tube, and, and then we'll, at that point, you know, everything will be operating on the new, uh, mechanical and electrical systems, and fire protection, all of those things.
It'll be phased in enough where it won't cause any disruptions to, to school over there.
It's, it's got some, some difficulties, but we feel if, if things work the way we've got it planned, um, and work can, work can start, you know, spring and, and summer, to get those, to get those utilities routed and clear up that space, so that we can start our construction.
All right, thank you. All right. Approve the one-time supplemental.
Uh, yes, sir, it'd be my recommendation, uh, this is something that we've done, uh, in previous years, that we would approve a one-time supplemental pay increase for both certified and classified employees.
All right, I need a motion. We have a motion.
I'll second.
I have a second. All in favor? Here. Do we have reasons for co-session?
Uh, yes, sir, we do, personnel.
All right, I need a motion, go ahead, co-session for KRS 61, 48. Make a motion. All right, I have a motion.
Second.
All right, we have a second. All in favor? Kerry, we are now in co-session.